Are you Gene?
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
How do you look?
You're unmuted.
We're unmuted. Went just a little long. I'm gonna give it one more minute and then we'll get started. I know Superintendent Payne had to step out for a moment, so. Appropriate time. Okay, it is Wednesday, November nineteenth at six twenty-six P M. And I would like to call the special meeting of the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union Board of Directors to order. First on the agenda this evening are public comments. If any members of the public here wishing to speak or online, if you are online and wish to speak, please just raise your hand and we will make sure we take care of that. Okay, hearing none. We have the consent agenda, which includes minutes, warrants, retirements, leave of absence, resignations, and nominations. If there's are no objections, I'd like to move those all as one. Can I have a motion?
You may first.
A second made by Glenn, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? Okay, you're none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, operations. Do we have anything when an operation? Okay. Next on the agenda, item four, treasures report to be posted. And internal controls document, I want to.
I can speak to the internal controls document. I don't know if the treasurer's report was there or not.
When I last looked, it was not, so I was just checking to see if it snuck in there.
So the internal controls document is required by law for us to provide this to the S U board on an annual basis. Basically, just outlining who who does what and making sure that we do have, you know, separation of duties and identifying any potential conflicts. So what will happen? I've updated this. I think. We had, we did have some updates to signers on some activities accounts, and those were probably the only changes from previous versions that you've seen prior years. So if if the board accepts this tonight, Scott, you as the chair would sign it, and then we just distribute it to the member districts as an F Y I in their future meetings.
Okay, so there was no treasurer's reports. There will be no action there. So could I have a motion to approve the internal controls document? I make the motion, motion made by Jeff. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Seconded by Glenn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Alright. I'm gonna ask the question. I'm not sure whether we're able to do it or not. We have four policies here to adopt and two to warn. If I were to read off the four to adopt, and we did it in in one, is that okay? Or do we have to do them all individually?
Together.
Together. Alright, so under policy, we have A, number six, one, nine, zero, holiday observance to adopt. We have B, number one, zero, two, five, public, public complaints about personnel to adopt. We have C, one, zero, nine, zero, use of school facilities to adopt, and we have D, five, one, five, six, student nutrition and wellness to adopt. Do I have a motion to approve to adopt? Six, one, nine, zero, one, zero, two, five, one, zero, nine, zero, and five, one, five, six?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
She made by Glenn, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion on any of those?
Scott, I had a, I had a question just on, some of them appear to still really need some formatting changes. Like there are over strikes that are still in the document, and typically, I thought, once they got to final adoption, that those changes would have been made. There's still one that has a note from Dina in it on the use of school facility. So it just, it almost looked like they weren't final.
I can review that for you some. So with that, we may it may not be prudent for us to adopt. Because what I would, what I would presume we would be adopting is the final version. And if that's not what we're
Yeah.
bringing as part of the board packet.
They weren't substantive?
Oh, did I miss something? Sorry, what was that, Nicole?
I was saying they didn't appear to be substantive, but when there's an over strike in a couple of areas, and then there's a note from Dina in a different document, it just I wanted to make sure that if what we approve tonight is what goes in for policies. I don't think we want to post these.
To your point, then we would be given the burden of making sure that what we approve tonight is actually what was struck from the last document or Yeah, so it may, it may make sense for us to table it and take care of it at the next meeting when those documents are fully updated.
That would be my inquiry.
Nicole, with your expertise in running, running meetings such as this, I've not encountered this before. When there is a motion and a second.
I don't know.
Get a second motion to table?
I think so.
Just retract it?
Or withdraw it?
Um, and who has to withdraw that?
The, the the second or in the first.
The first or in the second?
Whatever. The one they nervous with the second.
Track. The draw, the motion. Okay, so Jeff has made a motion to withdraw his motion.
I make the motion.
Glenn is going to second as well.
The second, the withdrawal. Okay.
Is there any discussion on the withdrawal?
I have just a quick question. Are we all looking? There, there was an amended packet and then initial. Because I just went into a couple, and I didn't see any strikeovers. Not to negate what you may or may not be seeing, I just want to be sure.
There was a strikeover on one.
Which one?
Public complaints about personal.
Public complaints, yes. But there wasn't some the other one.
Okay.
Got it. So, thank you.
Use of school facilities.
But I think we're looking at different ones.
Yeah, it's smarter than having a.
Okay, so.
What table for next meeting?
Yes. Okay, the next part of this then would be to the two policies that we have to warn, which are six, three, eight, two, home study programs, and four, four, five, zero, electronic communications between employees and students. Could I have a motion to warn six, three, eight, two, and four, four, five, zero?
Well, I would point out that this starts with the strikeout. This policy.
I think it's to show us what the changes are.
Yeah.
But before we move forward.
Okay, so you, we can warn it, and we expect it to be corrected.
Before we would adopt it, we would need to have that.
I'll make a motion to warn, warn policy sixty-three, eighty-two, home study program.
And
I'll second.
And the
Yeah.
And four, four, five, zero. Yeah, we did them together, if that's okay with you.
Yep, that's okay with me if I just find it. Four, four, five, zero.
It's the electronic communications between employees and students.
Okay, electronic policy forty-four, fifty, electronic communications between employees and students. I'll make a motion.
So we have a motion made by Ray. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sandy. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And are there any abstentions? Great, thank you. Item six on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
If I can do this quickly, as most folks heard my last time, Beth Lorge, interim assistant superintendent, has joined us. Okay, you have to stand out in front of the camera now so people can see you. There, there. Beth is joining us from Powell Elementary. I really appreciate her being on board. She's been super helpful just the last couple of weeks, so I look forward to really getting some things done as we move forward. Speaking of getting some things done, Scott talked about this at the last meeting, website, S V S U dot org. There is a button at the top that says department superintendent is the dropdown. Presentations that have been given by the month, goals for the S V S U, and goals for the superintendent are there, so folks want to check those out. There's also for this committee, in, as this body will evaluate my performance, I just want to let folks on this board know that I sent out a survey to the committee, community, asking about communication, and has it measurably improved in the last four months and ways that we can improve it? I hope to bring those results back in December, as this committee will be determining my evaluation going forward. So that's just a piece of information. Please know that it's out there in case you hear that from community members. Hey, this is being, and we'll, we'll have it'll be connected to the social media platforms and the website, but it also went out in an email to the community, hopefully spreading that out a little bit farther. Act seventy-three, I'm sure folks have been paying attention. The committee has decided to go in a different direction. It's not going to be proposing maps. The governor had a rebuttal to that, so stay tuned. I'm sure it'll be exciting, must-see TV as they move forward. In preparation, though, because one of the goals for this committee is to be keeping one eye on Act seventy-three as we move forward. And my suggestion to the board to consider is that we move through the budget, and in January, position ourselves to start having conversations, developing some talking points. So in December, when I come back to you, we have found a survey, and we think that would be a good one to distribute to the community to give them an opportunity to talk about Act seventy-three, what they know about it, what their opinions on that, and that would be information that we could provide the board. Probably closing that survey, we'll let everybody get through the holiday and bring that information back in January. And then another consideration for this board is perhaps designating a working group whose responsibility to the chair to this board would be to keep an eye update, because the flow of information is pretty impressive. If you're just reading the Vermont Digger, he could be able to be on the computer every day updating things like that. So collecting information from lots of places, putting it in front of this board, and then getting to the work of, what are we going to support? What are we going to advocate? I appreciate Leon talking about that. I definitely heard that from peers. I was not able to go to this year's conference. I will definitely be there. I appreciate Beth making herself available. This, the southern part of the state is starting to advocate for itself, and that's great, so we can do the next thing and get on the same page as far as talking points. Enough of me talking. The reason we're all here is Renee Gordon, Director of Finance.
Here to start the budgeting process.
Yeah.
Question for some.
Yeah, particularly about Act seventy-three process. I, I sent a letter to everybody, and today, unfortunately, I didn't give you much lead time on. But I would like to see if we can accelerate the process a little bit to, to at least come up with a statement from this board or other boards perhaps as well, as to what, how we see ourselves interacting with the process, like before we before the legislature gets under swing. Which would be what? I don't know what that date is, January, mid-January is. If we can do, manage to do that, but I think it's important for us to do that. A number of districts have already weighed in. Of course, it's a constant, it's a shift that's moving about in rough lines, so there's going to be changes. But I still think that we ought to have an idea of what direction we think is best for this, this, this district, these districts here and the supervisory. Yeah, so I appreciate the survey. I don't know exactly how that gets distributed, but it'd be nice to have a good return. Yeah. And I, I would be willing to participate on this. This advisory committee, because I've been wading into this. Right, thank you.
You brought up an incredible amount of good points in this. I got to read it first thing this morning. I think that we should all be aware of. You'd think if twenty-five years sitting on boards, I'd have some. I thought I said something nice.
No, you did. I totally appreciate that.
I mean, I could do the other guy.
I'm sorry, that's. I already, for me, you know.
Do you think Brad makes a good point in that? Just the speed at which things are changing. You know, we had a conversation with the legislature this week, and, you know, I think all of them were still absorbing what is happening and watching in real time as the committee, then the governor's response, and now, now, of course, you, the opinion pieces are flying around the state, and everybody's weighing in on their takes on it. I would, what I have asked the elected officials when I'm in front of them is be prepared to answer the question, why are we doing this? And they should be able to anchor themselves, something like, because if you say we're doing it to save money, that sparks one conversation in the group that you're in. If you're doing this to make sure every kid has a great education, that sparks another conversation. And as Ray has said, the Champlain Valley School Board weighed in and voted a piece, basically saying they didn't want to merge with anybody else that had already done the hard work in Act forty-six. So as a board, having some common agreement about what you want us to share as your staff, and what you want put out there in communication will be important. I would never assume that I could speak for the board without some direction, some conversations. But a, a small subgroup that says, we'll take on seventy-three, we're providing you in real time what the the information is, and then generating a response from the board.
Think happy hearty information from Dr. Abbott tonight, we might as well make that a bifold sort of group in that if they're going to change how Medicaid is reimbursed, if they're going to change the way that it bills, I know that's just going to keep you up at night as it is. We, we might want to have more than two or three people taking in information on that. I, you know, look to take a piece of it. But I think that there's like, it just sounds like an awful storm.
There's a lot of this room to do, a lot of pieces.
So that's for sure, you know. The first, first thing after this Act seventy-three meeting where they passed that, they decided on a particular proposal, it's not a map. To have the governor attack it, as he did, it's like, well, there's, there's really going to be a fight.
Yeah.
And I think that's probably a good thing. In a way, part, in part, but it's going to be totally disruptive about to districts who are under budget pressures right now, budget, to get a budget done, and also looking at loss of federal aid, Medicare aid, Medicaid aid, Medicare, excuse me. We're going to be wondering whether we've got our budgets batten down and workable after we voted on it, you know, it will be done, and we'll be looking, we'll be wondering whether we've made the right choices and, and support that budget.
Seems to be that every way, every year, though, has the rate.
I bet it's a little bit more this year.
Now until after, correct? So.
Yeah, well, we never know our student numbers. We don't know the financial aid from and from the state. It's always tenuous to some extent. This year, it seems like it's stretched way, way out, so. Okay.
Took a good news. Can I get your introduction?
It's depending on me to make the jump.
For the purposes of this evening, Renee has provided you with, hopefully, the full packet, but I asked her to start with three slides, and she kind of pushed back like, really? I said, well, again, you, you gotta, you know, you got a rookie superintendent, so the first three slides, we hope, kind of helps as like an executive summary. All the attached documents are there for folks who are experienced, and you want to see line by line where we are and things like that. But I'll let Renee walk you through, but she was following my directions of like, could we do a snapshot at the beginning? All the attachments on the back. We thought it might be helpful.
Okay, we hold this up for. So, as is has been typical with my budget presentations over the last several years. First one out of the gate is by budget category. So this is taking a couple of thousand lines of individual budget and compressing it into these nine categories for the S U. The columns that you see, the first three columns are our actual expenditures for F Y twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Then we have our current year's budget, and because we're in the midst of F Y twenty-six, we really can't do any comparisons at this point as to where we are or where we think we're going to land, but you do have your bu- budget stat report always as an F Y I in your board packets monthly. And then the proposed budget is identified there in, at that column. So the, the draft one that you have here before you is just under a million dollar increase, so we're the current budget at a, at a two point seven. So the second page of this document is kind of a very abbreviated narrative, which I appreciate Superintendent Payne saying, why don't we just try to make it a little bit more concise, highlights this year instead of what I was trying to do previously was a substantial amount of work in going through each individual line and trying to identify highlights from each of those in both the, the category setup, and then by function as well. So I'll, it's still there in the packet for everybody to see, and I'm happy to answer questions, but I will go through the highlights, and then the third page of the packet. Scroll down a little bit so folks know at home. So the third page two is the budget highlights, and again, I will go through this momentarily, and then the third page are the F T Es that are funded in this local budget, so they, I want to reiterate and point out specifically, the F T Es that are in this budget are what are represented here. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we did a grant presentation. Those F T Es are separate from this, because those are funded through federal funds or, and or state funds. So taking all of that together would give you the, the overall picture, but this is the, the local budget with the local F T Es that then we take, which we'll look at probably the next time, we look at this budget with the assessments and how those actually get built into the local budgets, and that's what folks vote on.
Let me ask a quick question. Is it possible to put a column for the the F T Es that are not paid out of local funds adjacent? Or do they actually mesh with these categories? The.
The, the grant presentation that, that is up on the website, it doesn't align perfectly, because there are some grant-funded positions that actually are not locally funded, and we have to keep them that way through the supplement versus the plan requirements of some of the federal funding. I, I can certainly tuck it, tuck the grant presentation in here. So you can have it, or I I could probably try to work it in somehow, but it won't align perfectly.
And too much time on it. If, if it's possible, we just give it side by side then.
Sure, thanks.
One thing I did want to point out, something that I noticed today was in the clinicians' F T Es that I have identified here, it does say three in M A U and two to be split between S V U, E S D, and North Bennington. Going back to that grant presentation, I actually had two and two there. Between doing that and doing this, we did have a new person come in who is currently locally funded, which is not in this draft, so it's showing that you have five F T Es, but what's in this budget before you is actually four. If we maintain our I D E A funding, and which we have been doing, that fifth one will actually come out of here, so there'll be a reduction of one, so we'll have four. that fifth one will actually come out of here, so there'll be a reduction of one, so we'll have four in the local budget and we'll keep two in IDEA. But there's just a slight discrepancy, um, in this draft, so I just wanted to mention that. So, coming back to the overall budget, um, so salaries and benefits. We do have, uh, factors in here, knowing that our collective bargaining units are currently, um, under negotiation, so we do have a factor in for both our our teachers and our support staff, along with, um, folks that are not covered by any collective bargaining agreements. Another thing that, um, we started looking at this year was trying to pull some of our partial FTEs that are grant-funded and pull them into, to local. Um, if you recall, we did have a scare, uh, over the summer, that we didn't know if we were gonna be getting all of our funding, um, through the feds. So, this draft budget that you have before you does pull all of our early ed staff out of Title One and pulls it into local, so that's driving some of the, the cost increase that you're seeing there. Um, and we did have a portion of the assistant superintendent, um, that was split fifty-fifty. I've slid that only to leave twenty-five percent in grant funding, so that's point seventy-five percent. Um, and you can see that in the FTE listing, so some things kind of shifting back and forth. So, um, in addition to, um, those grant shifts, um, we do have a one vet new FTE for a communications facilitator, it's a special education position, um, to assist with interpreting. So that is, um, a net add in FTEs, so that's in this budget. Um, along with that, it's part of the driver that you're seeing on the contracted service line too, because we do have, um, some communications facilitation happening through a contracted service right now as well. Uh, we have received, uh, proposed in health insurance rates from VHI, the Vermont Education Health Initiative. For the first time in a couple of years, it's only a single-digit increase. Um, so we're carrying that at eight percent. Um, it has been double digits the last couple of years, so it's, it's good to see. And you can see the budget that you have is only a two point two percent increase over current, because we're kind of going through and looking to make sure that we're not over budgeting. And then also, what, what are our staff currently electing right now? Uh, so that's what we have, and then in addition to that, if you recall last year, um, in trying to save some money, I had pulled back the amount of money that we were contributing to the HRAs. Has nothing to do with, with what folks are eligible to access through their health insurance. It was just the money that we're setting aside to cover those costs, so we had pulled that down to fifty-five percent. Um, and in this version of the budget, I've bumped that back up to sixty-five percent. Our exposure is still showing an average of about seventy to seventy-five percent. So, what has happened over the last few years, actually when we went to the high deductible health plans, we had no idea what the usage was gonna be, so I for the first couple of years was budgeting a hundred percent, so we've built up uh, a safety net of money in this, uh, in this account, essentially, so there are ample funds there to cover um, what we have to use for replenishments, so pulling that down, we'll start ticking down the amount of money that's in that account and then slowly try to start building it back up to get it to, you know, a, a better level than, than what was there.
So that's exerting some control on what benefits line. Increase. That, that help reimbursement account is below a hundred percent, which means that we actually are a saving.
Not, not budgeting.
Not, not bucket loads, no.
I should also, also point out, um, which I think I do, on, on the narrative or the budget highlights, um, we have eliminated a couple of FTEs. Actually from this budget through retirements, um, one in tech, one in early ed. Um, one, one was a one point oh and then the early ed position was a point eight. Um, so those are retirements, uh, the work is being absorbed in the tech department. Um, what, what we've done on the early ed side was, um, increase a small contracted service um, to fulfill, uh, essentially the role that the retiree is serving now, which is a health and family engagement, um, work there, that, so I think she's gonna do it part-time once she retires. So, uh, we'll pay her as a contracted, independent contractor to do that work. Um, let's see. For that. Um, also in the contracted service line, um, i- if you recall, I think one of the first presentations you received was, um, from our uh, Director of HR, Nick Gulp, um, and he was talking about, uh, the pipeline for folks to become teachers. There is a pilot program, um, that he has been contacted by, I don't know if it was the AOE or the Department of Labor, and so they're working collectively with Vermont State University, um, to develop an apprenticeship program for current employees, so we have put a hundred thousand dollars into this budget to support participating in that program. We're one of three entities in the state that have been approached to participate in this. Um, and we know that we do have some employees that are interested in, in getting into that pipeline and going through that work, so. We're hoping, yeah, I think he said, I don't know if it had a meeting this week or coming up, that we might be able to refine, uh, those dollars a little bit, but it's, it's a placeholder in there for now, anyway. Um, the other lines, you see their operations, transportation, tuition, they're all, all, so all decreases until we get to dues and fees and that's a, a standard increase annually to our, um, so dues and fees line number nine, uh, for the Vermont School Board Association, our dues, uh, to that organization increase every year. Also in that line are some dues and fees to our professional organizations, uh, Vermont Principal Association, Superintendent's Association and associated, um, national organizations there as well. The decreases, um, in transportation, mainly with, uh, Dr. Abbott's, um, steps to kind of start doing some transportation in-house, so if you recall, a couple of years ago, we leased, or we currently are still leasing, um, vehicles that we are transporting our own students around with, so we have hired drivers, we're doing, uh, D, DMV record checks on those drivers. So that has, uh, certainly helped, uh, curb some of the costs that we were experiencing with our contracted services. Um, and then tuition is also a combination of student services, but also early education, so we are budgeting for what we now know for out-of-district placements, um, and then we have seen a decline in our pre-K enrollment, so we've pulled back on the number of seats that we're budgeting uh, for pre-K tuition, but we have factored in an increase to that tuition, which is roughly around a hundred dollars, um, for each student. So I think those are like the real kind of overview highlights, um.
While it's a little bit early, do we have any sort of foreshadowing from negotiations at this point? Cause that's one, you know, that if it's so fluid here and we can't meet it here, that, that puts a scare.
I, they're negotiating publicly, so I don't know if you want to talk about what opening proposals were, but, um, they're opening.
I think it's premature to, to go too far down that path, right? They've had one, one meeting at this time, and they have a second meeting scheduled for tomorrow night. They'd probably all start high, which I guess they all look the same thing.
I've done it, that's why I'm.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're coming off, you know, an extraordinary contract, um, of two years of nine percent increases, so um, clearly you can see I don't have that in here, and I know people like to look at that number and say, hey, I know you've got six point nine percent budgeted for increases. You can't actually do that because of the shifts in FTEs, um, new positions, so. Yeah, and of course there's different staffing levels that we have in here too.
In my short time here, I've just never seen things so, you know, unsure, I'm sure this isn't news to you either.
Yeah, it's, um, hoping that we have some more solid footing with, with, what's gonna happen with the feds. You know, as we move along, um, the budget that, that, that kicking the can down the road right now, but the budget that they, that the, um, the feds are working on will actually be funding our programming for FY twenty-seven, so if they can come to some kind of agreement, you know, in the next four months. But the AOE is trying to keep us informed, so as, you know, as they get intel, and they're certainly sharing that with us, um, so we can plan accordingly.
Did you have a question to the board?
That I have a question for the board?
We're asking if the, um, as part of the budgeting process, board can give direction, ask for information, we're gonna be coming back to you in December, if there's anything additional you'd like for consideration or an update. I, I wouldn't dare to make a promise on negotiations, but, um, as December's another compacted month for meetings, now, so.
On this administration, um, page on speech three. Are those bus drivers the ones that you were referring to that ended up decreasing the transportation costs? Or are they part of the bus those?
So those are the, um, quote-unquote gen ed regular bus drivers for our Lieutenant Sandgate. The special, um, student services bus drivers are actually at the very bottom of that page, drivers, and they, they're not really full-time, you know, some of them work a couple hours a day, some of them work a little bit more than that, so FTEs are roughly four total, um, but there are multiple people, um, serving in those capacities.
I'm only asking because there is this ten point seven percent decrease in transportation, which, which is lovely. And eleven point six increase in contracted services, so I just wondered if that's because those drivers are actually contracted to do that and they're part of that.
So, all the drivers that, that are budgeted are paid as employees, so you're seeing those in the salaries and benefits lines. The contracted services line, um, does not include transportation, I did, um, break that out separately. Um, but the contracted services include things like our, um, contracts with the New England Center for Children. So each of those classrooms comes with a price tag of in excess of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we have, uh, contracted services, that's where the, the hundred thousand dollars is for the apprenticeship.
We're not talking about any, any current contract services, like I know you just said neck.
No, and it's
That's personally you just said, but you know, like, we're not looking at anything like that.
Not looking at ending it, and if, if you notice, looking at what the, the prior year's expenditures or, or even like FY twenty-five expenditures on the contracted services, the current budget that I'm proposing right now is less than what we spent last year. And that's because, um, I'm, I'm really trying to make sure that we're not over budgeting. But also too, what happens when we have vacancies in student services? If we can't fill that position as a last resort, Dr. Abbott goes to contracting. So we're basically repurposing those funds that we budgeted in the salaries and benefits lines to cover the contracted costs. So if that happens again next year, um, we will pull from those sources of funds to cover those costs. So that shouldn't be alarming to anybody that have less money budgeted there than what we spent last year.
There is a connection between tuition and transportation in that part, correct? Fewer students having to be transported to an out-of-district placement, so that you may see a decrease in the need to pay tuition as we've had fewer students access that and the need to transport.
Yeah, we, and we're using, I think, our own drivers to do some of that out-of-district, um, transportation through our contractor, um, if we were to utilize them to, to do those transports, it's over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year just for transportation to those out-of-district placements, so it's definitely a cost, cost savings, the way that, um, things are currently running.
At what point, given the number, um, of out-of-district placements, um, the transportation, the, a- at what point does, and I'm sure that this is already happening, but do we start to say, um, it's time for us to build our own, to have our own facility? And be perhaps the hub that people are sending to, to help these, to, to help these kids along as opposed to needing to look out, outward, and understanding that that could be an investment. But it could be a worthy, it could be a worthy one. Well, man, I think of like the NEC program, which is, you know, you have highly qualified people who understand, you know, that, that autistic community and you know, I don't think you'd build that here, you don't have enough providers, I don't think, you know, especially services.
Yeah, and especially with, with those classrooms, there's like waiting lists oftentimes to
I mean, when we share the report and having a conversation with Dr. Roy, first, we, we're struggling with the same thing the whole state is. Which is there are a lack of alternative settings, so you send kids to Massachusetts or you send them to North Carolina, things like that, but her, uh, point to what Jeff was talking about was, um, NEC is, uh, you know, a one-to-one. Going back and looking at it and saying, okay, so what kiddos don't need that level of support anymore? You can still train within that model, but maybe you can hire someone local, you can free up, like there's, she keeps telling us she should have that kind of continuum, it shouldn't be every kid that's identified, and we don't. But every kid with autism doesn't go into a NEC classroom. You should, and right now, she's saying you lack some of those opportunities between full inclusion with the part, with your kid, with your peers, and we have to send you somewhere else, sorry, so I think there's opportunity, and to Scott's point, again, I think everybody's kind of in the similar spot, that might be an opportunity to talk to a BRSU or a neighbor and say, hey, if we, if we found something, we would save each other money in transportation and programming and, you know, that may not be up, uh, available to us now.
Well, there, there are districts that are talking about constructing the BOCs, like organizations. Or some smaller districts upstate to take care of some of these. I think, basically, this sort of discussion could, uh, generate, uh, you know, if we worked with our neighbor to the north, BRSU, um, we both have these issues, I'm sure. And, uh, so you, you could probably, uh, put some, some money into the BOCs and be well-preloaded with the lower cost. Perhaps, so we have to see them. And that's, that's actually what's in this proposal that's going to the legislature from the redistricting committee. There's under fifty-four pages there, it's well worth the read.
Oh, I mean, it does have a lot of charts and graphs, so do you?
And actually, I've heard that there have been, there've been some changes, so that, that later on this month, they're, they come up with the final draft and will be, uh, a little different from what's at the moment.
It just won't have any maps.
Won't have a map because it's not, uh, making choices for districts.
Uh, that is logging off. Thanks, Beth.
Bye, Beth.
I want to thank Mr. Payne for pushing me to have this put in the packet when it was warned. Um, but as we found today, I was like, oh, no, look, I found it. But I just wanted to ask you.
Appreciate you recognizing it at the start of the presentation. I, I will, I need to say this in front of the board, Renee is an invaluable director. The time and money and the number of days I chase her out of the building at like five thirty and six o'clock, we turn the lights off and walk out. Her attention to detail is, uh, truly in service of this board, so I appreciate it. And she hauls me in this first thing this morning, I missed something, told you this, and I, so, but we are trying to meet the request of the members, can we please see the numbers early? I just ask for your, your grace that if who finds a map, you know, we have to update this, we will tell I just ask for your, your grace that if you finds a map, you know, we have to update this, we will tell you that we will be transparent. And I appreciate all the effort Renee does for us, so.
Well, you turned off the lights here, but you didn't turn off the lights in here.
Employee assistance is the next step.
Hope you've booked your two weeks, deservedly somewhere.
I think we're about ninety days.
Does have a calendar calendar.
So.
Ninety-two days until.
So looking at the total expenditures, the last page, page six, is that the last page? No, there's another one, but that, that one has the variance from.
Are you looking at the packet? So, okay, I can, I'll pull it up.
So.
When I.
No, that's not what I was looking at, I wanted to look at. Well, sorry, I saw this and I've forgotten where it is. I, I was looking at what's left over from previous budgets.
Oh, yeah, I, I think that is the last.
That's, that's, it looks like it's, is it ten percent? Ten point eight, yeah, there it is. Page eleven.
So I think it was last year, maybe the year before, I tried to condense this massive budget even more into groupings, so we could see where we were potentially under budgeting, over budgeting, and really try to sharpen, you know, our pencils for this. So this, this grouping right here showing you our budget of twenty-five is the actual, and then the difference just by, by grouping. So our EL was under by just a bit, but everything else, you can see that we did end up with surplus funds. Again, special education, it's, it's always tough because Kate's always trying to prepare for, you know, what might be coming, and then we struggle with filling all of our positions. And oftentimes, you know, we end up with vacancies that we can't even fill through contracted services. That's where a lot of those surpluses come from, that the bottom of that page is kind of taking the same grouping and then comparing the current year's budget to to next year's. So you can see that, you know, really trying to squeeze special education, so we're, we're not necessarily over budgeting there.
So that, I think that, to me, that seems to lead to a couple of, or at least one sort of philosophical question about it, because it's, it's in part because we can't find service providers to provide services. So are we in fact shorting children's services that they require? Because we can't fill, fill these positions.
Yes.
You don't.
Sorry, Ray, in that pilot program that the state approached us on, how did they make that determination? How did we end up on their radar?
It's, we didn't qualify because we had a percentage of provisionals or emergencies, I don't know.
North, north.
I think, yeah, I think we got picked for geography.
And. And probably size, too.
So the state came to us and said, you're a big district and we would like you to spend a hundred thousand dollars to to promote the licenses that you have.
They're, they want to start a program that will help current, potentially even paraeducators that are interested in becoming a licensed teacher that they can do this work while still maintaining their employment.
So they're the school, the college, the schools, and we're, it's like we're paying tuition for the employee.
Got it, thank you.
So it's kind of like the hospital, we take the L and As or LPNs, and they have the program, still work part-time, you get paid to go to school part-time to get your current license, that's a feeder program.
It's a lovely program, it's just the way it was resented, I was thinking, oh, they want us to do this.
Give them money.
Yeah, so it's, it's, you know, so our, our collective bargaining agreements entitle our employees to continuing education. So it's just a route for them to our path for licensure. Again, we're still trying to explore exactly how, how long it's going to be, how many people are actually gonna participate, so we can potentially refine that number. But then we'll also probably look to make sure that we aren't over kind of extending. So we want to work within the parameters of those collective bargaining agreements in that, you know, say it's ten credits or ten classes that you would earn over five years. We would want those folks to make sure that they're giving us a commitment to stay here and work here for that time to, to earn that back.
Similar to the administration program we had.
Yeah.
To, to raise a question, again, having peeked behind the draft from Megan Roy, she found that the district is adequately staffed, but positioning those people in the right places, prioritizing services is gonna be the next, will be one of the challenges we need to address.
So she thinks we're spending the proper.
She feels that we have enough, we have enough FTEs committed to the work, but how we use them and what we ask them to do, that's, we need to revisit them.
Okay, so then that doesn't account for the surpluses? Is it in numbers of students? In, in like pre-K programming, you mentioned earlier that we're we're going to budget less because there are fewer students in program. Okay, so that's fairly straightforward, you're not, there's no lack of service to the students. I don't know about early essential education, because that varies, it's not, and it's not a huge number of students at any given year. But, you know, we have fifteen percent left over between the budget for twenty-five and the actual expenditure for twenty-five. So I'm just asking for, if we can figure out a way of accounting for whether we're actually delivering sufficient number of level of service. Why that, you know, I, I know, I know you budget extra anyway, so that's part of it, you know, you're, you're a proven budgeter, so you provide extra money for contingencies. And so it's, it's really a question of sharpening the scaffold, figuring out what's the, the contingency, what's a service, whether it's a service temp, and whether it's just numbers of students or whatever, like, I don't know. But I would like to.
There'll be more, some of those insights will be, more of those insights will be in what Dr. Roy.
Yeah, provides first thing.
Yeah, and this is really a rough, rough draft, because we've never gone this early before, have we?
Oh, yeah, no, we have, yeah, at the SU level, yeah, we always go, go early. I feel I'm comfortable with, with what we have in this budget, and I'm actually pleased that I've kind of gone through and shaved out where I think we really could shave out. And keeping it, you know, at least this draft is below a three percent increase when we know that health insurance is more than that, that the salaries are probably, you know, gonna be more than that, but we don't know.
And I'm never, I'm, I'm, I want to be careful here because I don't want to come across as being irresponsible for the, for, for the people, our constituents who are feeling things in, in many ways. But you're, you're comfortable with what has been at least presented here to us. We're not leaving anything big out, we're not, we're not or things that we should be do, thinking about to be more forward-thinking, or we're not underfunding something that we know is really important, but we're gonna, I mean, those are the, when you all the pressures that we have of, you know, attaining test scores, making sure that, making sure that what the money that we're spending on special education is actually delivering on that, and then you go on the other side and feel the, the need to pinch pennies or to, to cut from places, that gets a little scary to me, because we have, we have people who also expect that we're gonna deliver a certain level of product.
I think we can do that within what we, we have here. And all of the directors in meeting with them came in conservative, like they, they know what they need, you know, for their departments. I think, you know, this is the first thing that Kate hasn't actually asked for additional staff. I mean, with the exception of, you know, the, the communications facilitators, but we, we had to do that because of IEP services, so. Now, I mean, and.
Good. So Roy, the underlying, that unknown is the salary, contract negotiation, that's the unknown.
Now, there was also a specialized piece where we didn't know whether we would be funded, so some of those went into local funding that may come back out. So there is that other piece as well, so even though there could be a discrepancy, it may work out.
Yeah, no, I think what, what has happened historically because of, I think it was actually some legislation that was passed to help support the continuation of Vermont State Teacher Retirement System. Any, any licensed educators that we are paying with federal funds, we have to pay over twenty-five percent of their salary directly into teacher retirement. So that's like coming right off the, the top. So in certain classifications of employees that we have in student services, some of them do have an educator's license, some have a professional license, so they're either in teacher retirement, or sometimes they're just in municipal retirement. If they're municipal retirement, I'll keep them in the grant because I don't get whacked that twenty-five percent excess. But if we do have a staff come in that is part of teacher retirement because they have that educator, I want to get them out of that grant to be able to retain that twenty-five percent instead of just putting it into teacher retirement. So that's where that discrepancy came, but I looked at that staffing level or those folks that we have, and I do have some that are, that are remers that I can pop back into the grant. So what you have here would just be reduced by one clinician, and we would be good to go.
Thank you.
Renee, what would you propose for the board for consideration in December?
Is there any direction that you, you want to see, or you know, just come back with whatever refinements we might have based on information that we get from various state agencies or, or whatnot? And then, of course, I'll have what the assessments are gonna look like, too.
As long as, I, I, I mean, I feel like that's the prudent thing to do, as long as there's nothing that gives you anxiety from either an underspending or overspending perspective.
I'm good with this budget right now, this one, the other ones, we'll talk next month.
What is it that we needed this year for forty thousand that we don't?
For next. The equipment line, I continually just keep moving. So what happened, again, the feds changed their threshold for what's considered a fixed asset or something that we would record as a piece of equipment, so that threshold is now a single item with a single value of ten thousand dollars or more. We don't buy things typically of that nature, you know, if I'm buying one of these, it might be a thousand dollars, but it ends up in the supply line. So that, that was a tech thing, so that just moved from equipment into the supply section.
For the SU budget, when we get to the others, we'll see that.
If there are things, yeah, there are some pieces of equipment, like motorized things that, yeah, people have requested.
So they're, so they're big ticket items?
Yes.
Big ticket tech items?
More than ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
And you're all set, that, that exhausted superintendent's report?
All of them.
Okay, Chair's report, I don't have anything specific for us this evening. So with that, we would move into item eight is just an FYI on the agenda of the budget status report, and do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that.
And we have a second. Although, any discussion on adjournment?
Discuss. I appreciate all of you who came and staffed through meetings.
Recording in progress.
Favor. Yeah, for those of you who were here yesterday.